Good morning. Welcome to the December 3, 2019, meeting for the Saline County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Weiss?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here. I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we move into the public forum portion of our business, I'd like to recognize that and welcome our newest member of our staff, and that is our new county administrator, Mr. Philip Smith Haynes. He comes to us from Ellis County, and we welcome him. Quite a crowd to welcome you. I think they're all here just that. So, at any rate, welcome, Phil, to our staff, and we know you're going to do a great job while you're here and outlast all of us, that's for certain. I'd be remiss if I didn't also thank Hannah Stanbaugh for the job that she's filled in in the last, I think, what, 90 days, 60 days? A lot of them.
A lot, yeah.
Probably 200 days, never mind. Hannah's done a wonderful job and will continue to serve in her role as the deputy county administrator. So, with that, we'll move into our public forum where citizens may speak on items that are not on today's agenda. So, does anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the agenda for today's public forum. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, the motion does carry. Item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for November 26, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of November 26, 2019 as presented.
Second. Been moved in second that we accept the county commission minutes as written for those who have it, 26, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Item number three.
RFA 183-19 bid award for bathroom remodel with Rosie Walter, Department of Senior Services Director.
Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning. We are requesting commission approval to accept Pontoon Construction Incorporated's bid, the only bid received, for the bathroom remodel and the new restroom that we're going to put in at the senior center. The bid that we're requesting is $92,598 and 22, which is less the fixtures for the two bathroom remodels and the new handicap restroom that we're going to put in. One bid was received for $97,332 and 37 with the less of the textured walls instead of tile, $3,968 less, and then less the fixtures, $4,734 and 15. So, we're requesting the tile, but less the fixtures.
I guess I'm a little concerned that only one company bid on this.
Mm-hmm.
And our bid procedure, Hannah, goes out on the website, is posted in numerous places. I know there's a lot going on in Salina right now, but it just seems a little strange that did we put any stipulations in there that might restrict who could possibly be thrown out or not bid?
We did not, Commissioner. As you said, there is a lot that's going on in town. I have a feeling that there's a lot of just different projects that are nearing completion that other contractors are working on, and I share your concerns as only having the one bid. Unfortunately, this is a project that we've been working on for several, several months, and we do need to get started on it.
I'm agreeing with that. Have we checked with an architect or someone like that who might have given you an estimate?
The architect actually put all this together for me, Johnny Adam, A+. You know, originally when we did this, we thought it would be about under $50,000, but then we had to change it because of the way that the building is. We didn't want to cut into the walls. So, we added the storage closet as the ADA bathroom so we wouldn't have to cut into the walls and to make the other restrooms ADA. So, it did increase that. And then the plumbing under the cement, so cutting through all of that, I know increased that cost dramatically.
I've kind of cut you off. Is there more that you want to disclose before we go further?
No. Nope.
I'm struggling with just one bidder, but if that's the way it is. I know what I want to say. How are you going to pay for this? Tell us that.
We applied for grants. So, we received, well, we have about $379,000 in grant funds between the county match and then the foundation grants that we received, and then the donors. We have donors that kicked in some money, too.
So, tell me how much money this is going to cost the county?
Zero.
That's the word. She said zero, in case anybody didn't hear that.
Zero.
Very important. And I want to tell everyone that Rosie's done a wonderful job of going out after grants and soliciting donations and things like that. It's been very important for us to be able to continue Meals on Wheels and Senior Services. It's a strong portion of our, of Saline County since we took that over what has been a couple of years now.
Two years.
So, she's really stepped up to the plate and
Thank you.
And done a wonderful job, so thank you for that. So, bring it back to the commission for questions and whatever.
Rosie, I got one question. The logistics of the work being done and the operations of the senior center, how are you going to, will they be just using the restrooms on different floors then?
Yeah. During that timeframe, I'm, I do have tenants in the building, so I have to keep the building open. So, it does have asbestos in it, so we are going to have that abated. So, we were going to block everything off. But I'm hoping that between my other projects like the kitchen, I can do it all at the same time, and then I'll just move Meals on Wheels out to the Expo Center, and then I'll keep the main floor closed. Second two floors, I'll keep open. You know, I have a lot of activity on the second and third floor.
Do you have a timeframe of how long the work should take?
Well, they have projected probably six weeks. So, we've worked with Rick Lamer out at the Expo Center, and he's agreed to let us do Meals on Wheels and use the kitchen out there, so we won't miss a beat on Meals on Wheels. We just won't have the dining room open.
Great. Any other comments from commissioners, questions?
Is there any reason why, excuse me, but is there any reason why the, you can't have the kitchen open out there at the Expo Center?
Rick's got a lot of other activities besides us.
Yes, okay.
So, he didn't want to monopolize everything. So, he's been very gracious just to let us use that kitchen. But yeah, he's got a lot of stuff happening out there.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any public comment regarding this, the action, the bathroom remodel at the senior services? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for the bathroom remodel in Pontoon Construction in the amount of $92,598 and 22 cents.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 183-19 bid award for bathroom remodel. Further discussion? Not. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same side, motion does carry.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number four.
RFA 184-19 bid award for construction manager at risk for the jail project with Hannah Stanbaugh, deputy county administrator.
You have the spotlight, Hannah.
Thank you, Commissioner. The Saline County Administration is requesting approval to accept one of the proposals for a construction manager at risk for services for pre-construction in regards to the Saline County Jail project. Separate authorization would be required for the general conditions and the overhead profit, otherwise known as the post-bond work, should there be a successful passing of a bond referendum by the voters of Saline County. Since the hiring of Trainer HL, the Saline County Board of County Commissioners elected to use a construction manager at risk as the project delivery method for the Saline County Jail project. Request for qualifications was solicited on November 1, and a total of five firms submitted their qualifications. The jail committee met on November 4 to review those qualifications, experience and reference letters, and relevant project history. Three firms were selected to move on to the second phase, which consisted of presentations and questions and answers in front of the Board of County Commissioners. On November the 19th, three firms, J.E. Dunn, The Law Company, and Turner, all presented their teams, qualifications, and provided answers to specific questions asked by the commissioners and the jail committee members. At the conclusion of all these presentations, the sealed fee proposals submitted by each of those companies was opened and read aloud, and the fee proposals were attached to this request for action. You do have three alternative, well, you have five alternatives. The first one would be to accept the proposal for J.E. Dunn and extend the authorization for pre-construction services. Option number two is to accept the proposal from The Law Company to extend approval for Phase 1 for pre-construction services. And option number three, accept the proposal from Turner and extend an approval for Phase 1 pre-construction services. Number four, reject all of the proposals, or five other options as the commissioners deem necessary. The budget impact will be affected differently depending on which firm is selected and which option is selected to move forward with any type of potential construction. This expense will be taken from the Saline County Capital Improvement Account, and the current balance is 6.1 million. There is no recommendation that we have that administration is proposing. This was, we had quite the wonderful day of interviews with these particular firms, and to be quite honest, there's several of the firms that I think will, we would be in good hands, no matter who it is, that we particularly choose to move forward with. So, subject to any questions that you have for myself or even for the sheriff.
I'm having a difficult time following the Dunn Construction Company's bid because of the percentages that are attached without numbers for me to work off of.
Right.
Whereas, whereas the others have given us a firm number of what their proposal is.
Correct.
So...
So, that was the information that was presented to you last week to give you a little bit of the idea as far as that cost breakdown or what that would be. So, those percentages are going to be based off of the total project cost for any type of option that is selected for a jail project. And again, you do have to keep in mind and understand that some of these costs are going to be completely associated with whatever option is chosen, which none has been at this point in time, and then the successful passing of any bond referendum for, by the voters of Saline County.
Does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
You know, I think we're pretty much torn between two particular firms, and so I really can't bring any type of recommendation to you.
When we pick somebody today, when will they start?
That will be, the hope is, is that we are working with Trainer HL to develop a, our first town hall meeting or public meeting that is hopefully scheduled for December the 17th, and it would be the hope that our construction manager at risk will be at that meeting.
Okay.
Whoever is selected, I will contact them first thing and make sure that they are available.
And the construction manager at risk needs to be part of the planning on the options, I would assume, so it's not just Trainer that's going to come up with the options.
Absolutely.
It's going to be with this company.
Absolutely. So, a construction manager at risk is really important to have onboard, and a lot of it has to do with really looking at the options that we do have and figuring out that constructibility. Is what it is that's being proposed by Trainer, is it constructable? Can we do that?
Right.
Along with that is also just a lot of the cost estimating, estimating to really give us a better idea as far as those construction piece of it. You know, Trainer's going to do a great job with us with getting us some cost estimates, but they're not the construction experts.
Right.
And that's the whole purpose of bringing a construction manager at risk onboard, and of course, with other multitude benefits for having them.
Many of the questions I'm getting from constituents are, which option have you picked?
Right.
And we're a ways away from that.
That is correct.
Okay.
And I think that's, that's the reason as to why the commissioners have decided to use a construction manager at risk as the project delivery method, fully while knowing that whatever option is chosen, we need to know, number one, that it is constructable, but number two, how much it's going to cost, because that cost is going to be extremely important when we go to the voters for a bond referendum.
Thank you.
As I go down the list here and look, though, it does appear, if we go strictly off of numbers, that Turner is the low bidder.
That is correct.
As far as dollars and cents goes.
That is correct, sir.
Not, not by a huge amount, but they are the low bidder. So, other comments from commissioners?
I would like to make a comment is that I just received some information yesterday in regards to two of these companies, and one company was brought to my attention that even though they are one of the largest construction companies in North America or in the world, is that they feel that, that the company, that this project is too small for them to handle. And so, I Googled it last night and found out that there are over 200 lawsuits against them right now. And so, I, I would deeter away from the one large construction company that we are looking at, is just in regards to that, because the construction company out of Chicago said that they are such a large company and that this small of a project, they, they would be here for a little bit, then they would disappear, because that's what they do all over the place, and they, they're, they're in with big, big projects. And so, I'm, I was torn between the two. Like you said, we, I think we could go good with either one, but when that was brought to my attention and it was very easy to find on Google, so it was like, and of course, you can't believe everything you read on Google, but it was right into their website that I was at that I searched that, and then it showed up. So, I, I know which way I would go then.
I do appreciate that, Commissioner. I mean, I'm glad that you were able to look at that information, just so that you are aware, too, all the reference checks and phone calls that I made, none of that information was, was revealed as far as that high number of lawsuits. And that can be subjective completely depending on what the, what the content of that lawsuit is, too.
Those comments are concerning to me because I'm certain he's talking about the, the firm that I'm, in my mind, that I want to choose. So, I don't know if it, I know time is of the essence. So, you know, if we're talking December 16th town hall meeting, we've got to have somebody onboard. We've got to, we've got to get the ball rolling here. To delay this another week is dangerous, I think, in terms of getting everything accomplished. But I don't know, what other, what did the rest of you think?
Mr. Chairman, I am not comfortable making a decision today. We've got advisory committee that can't come to a consensus evidently. I've got mixed emotions also. I'm sorry, but I'd like to table it for a week.
I got a question. Hannah, did, and I don't know if it's even correct to do, but did, was Trainer's thoughts brought in on this decision by the focus group? Did they, did they have any input as far as the decision?
Not a whole lot, and I think there, I mean, there's a good reason for that. Trainer has worked with both J.E. Dunn and Turner, and also, you know, the third company, The Law Company. So, for them to have preference over one or the other, certainly, we want to be very cautious of that just to ensure there's no bias from, from Trainer
Right, I understand that.
In making that particular decision.
Contrary to what a lot of people think, we don't talk about this beforehand. So, I, you know, I really, I'm interested in everybody's comments. My only comment would be, two definitely rose to the top from their presentation, did just an outstanding job. Not knowing that information, I don't think we could have gone wrong with either one of them. The jail that I visited with the sheriff and was down in Hutchinson, and that's kind of what I'm going on, and it seemed to be something that would work here, and that was a Trainer-JE Dunn project. And so, that would be the, how I would lean. I would still, you know, like to hear what everybody else says, but I would lean towards that because it's the project that I know, and it seems like the perfect match.
And I'll back up on that there also is that J.E. Dunn during the three interviews is that J.E. Dunn, to me, was, was like at the top of my list, and then Turner showed up and then kind of had some areas, but J.E. Dunn, I, I thought that Turner was here and J.E. Dunn was right there also. And one part that J.E. Dunn really brought out was their software capabilities of planning out and working with the architect to work with the project costs very quickly, and to me was deal. But Turner, at that point, seemed to also think that, okay, we're going to be your best fit, and so I was swayed towards Turner up until yesterday when I found out some information. Then it was, okay, you're gone. So, but that's, that's just how I felt about it, because I felt the same way, is that we had the two that I felt that we both could do good with, but now one has some issues that I kind of put on the back burner and want to go with the other. So, I would, I understand the concept of let's go on down the road and look in some more, but to me, it was a either or, and I know which one I would vote for today.
Commissioner seems prudent that this being come out, that we ought to allow them to be able to respond to it.
Yes.
I didn't know this beforehand, so again, like you said, we don't talk about this beforehand, but I would be nervous to turn down what I think is a qualified firm. Again, my choice is J.E. Dunn, but Turner was very qualified. I would hate to turn that down without them being able to respond to your comments. Does that make sense?
Oh, yes, definitely. You bet.
I'd like to ask, did you also Google J.E. Dunn?
Yes, I did.
And there was no hickies on there?
I don't want to say there was two. The other had over 200, and one of these that J.E. Dunn had was a, a lawsuit that's been going on for years and a development of a project software that I know about. So, it's a...
Did you take the percentage of jobs that were being done and factor that into the number of lawsuits?
No, I did not, no, because I figured if the one, the, and there was not a whole lot even about the one about J.E. Dunn on it, about what that lawsuit was even about. So, yeah, but no, I did not.
Well, Turner was my choice. If we were to act on that today, time, I recognize time is of the essence, but with this 11th hour development, I feel that we, we need to do due diligence in that we do need to delay this a week and do some investigating and substantiate some of the claims or allegations or whatever in background a little further. So, that would be my choice.
With legal counsel not here, I would hate to get us into a mess.
I'm agreeing.
You know, when a motion does come, I would ask you guys to contact Montoya and get his advice on how to proceed to this, and if we have to call a special, Bob, if we have to call a special meeting this week, then, then we can. So, because time is of the essence, but Commissioners Whites' comments resonate with me, too.
Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a motion?
Well, I don't know if we need a motion, Mike. I think we just need to stop and step back, or do we need a motion, Phil, in this regard? I mean...
Nothing's been thrown out. No proposal's been thrown out, so I'm not so sure.
Right, that's what I'm getting at. I think if we just, as you just suggested earlier, just we're going to table this for a week and come back.
I'd appreciate it. There's too many questions out there that need to be answered ahead of time, and...
Yep.
In other words, we're not going to select a construction manager at risk today. I think that is a consensus of the, of the group. That having been said, we'll move on to item number five.
Commission discussion and potential action on the livestock and expo lease.
Now for the fun, that we've all come for, I suppose. This is a, a item point with the commission. The commission will give their opinions, talk first, and then we will open it up for public comment. First, I want to let you know that commissioners didn't just decide to close the Expo Center. Deliberations have been ongoing for nearly three years with this commission and even longer if you include past commissions. I don't think there's one person up here who wants to close the facility. Saline County does not own the Expo Center. The city of Salina owns that property. Our lease is coming to an end, and that's where we start. Now, I'll get into my personal thoughts here and observations. Anything that I say at this point forward is my thoughts and not representative of the other commissioners, because they have the, the ability to speak for themselves. But I want to thank the city commissioners and city staff for their willingness to negotiate, and I respect their decision. They have to do what they see best for the city of Salina. Conversely, it is my responsibility to do what I think is best regarding affairs pertaining to Saline County. The Expo Center first opened the doors to Agricultural Hall in April of 1930, nearly 90 years ago. It has been, long been an important piece of history for Saline County. I'm not against the Expo Center. I grew up in Salina and Saline County. I recognize the importance of remembering our heritage. I also know what the Expo Center brings to our youth and their development. I also recognize there is an economic factor to consider. Media accounts did not reveal the whole story last week. The length of the lease is only part of the proposal. Also tied to the lease proposal is a request for Saline County to invest $5.7 million for upgrades and renovations. That was to be invested in the first five years of that lease agreement. That equals $1,140,000 annually, coupled with the present budget of $354,000, which totals $1,490,000 annually for the Expo Center. The Expo Center received rent in 2018 of $80,000, and they're on a pace to do about $95,000 this year. End result, operating deficit of $1.4 million. Bottom line would be about a 2.63 mil levy increase continuing for five years, which would only take care of the Expo Center. We, we had a 2.43 mil levy increase for 2020, and we're still hearing about it. These projects are proposed to be finished within the first five years of the lease. Being asked to spend that amount of money does not make sense to me for a 25-year lease. At the end of the day, it simply does not make economic sense to me to spend this amount of money for something that has an uncertain future. I don't think this is what the taxpayer wants us to do. Keep in mind, I'll say it again, I want the Expo Center to stay in business, but we're representing taxpayers, too. So, I mean, that's an important factor to think about. With that, I'll get off the soapbox and turn it over to anyone else who wishes to have something to say.
Mr. Chair, if I may, as we entertain comments today, I just want to make it clear that my stance is not set in stone. I'm looking forward to hearing today outside-the-box ideas and thoughts on how we proceed. Rest assured, this issue is important to all the commission and is one that we have spent much time and effort trying to come up with a plan that works for best for all, for all involved. Commissioner White has been dealing with this for 20 years, so this is one issue that is not, will not be taken lightly. That being said, I've been approached by many this week, and there's one option being discussed that I'm not interested in being part of, and that is going to the voters for a bond issue to build on the land out south. We are already planning on going to the voters this spring to potentially raise tens of millions to build and renovate a jail. Going to the taxpayers for two votes will not be successful. I'm holding out hope that something can be worked out with the city, but if not, and we want to continue to host the Ag events, there is a successful model that may work. When the Friends of the Stiefel Theater were interested in converting the old Dickerson Theater into what it is today, Governor Graves chaired a fundraising group and raised over 2.5 million. The taxpayers then came up with 750,000 to help complete the effort. The first tee golf course was built with private funds raised by Bill Knox, and the city donated the land and is in charge of operating the course. The Salina Soccer Club raised private money to build its facility, again with the city donating the land and operating the fields. Currently, groups representing the tennis complex and the baseball complex are fundraising private money and presenting a plan in the near future. None of these plans were driven by government, but citizens interested in their own certain interest. Maybe someone out there today has a plan... their own certain interest maybe someone out there today has a plan that they want to present to us soon again hopefully we can work out something with the city but these are just a couple of my thoughts before we take comments.
Additional comments from Commissioners.
Briefly Mr. Chair I feel that the county has stood up tall in its offer to expend nearly $6 million to upgrade the expo grounds with that amount of expenditure a minimum lease of 40 years is needed to justify the expense of public dollars we seem to be at an impasse with the city and and there comes a time when you just need to agree to disagree the city mayor speaking to the Salina Journal mentioned that maybe the expo grounds would be better served under one government entity and possibly the city should manage it we haven't looked at that type of government for the expo center but maybe that needs to be explored.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman I'm anxious to listen to what these folks have to say come up with some magic formula that will allow us to keep this open our facility and whether the city operates it I don't know I I hope to hear something personally my head is sore I beat my head up against the wall for three years now this recent period and I'm sorry it's hurting so I'm I'm anxious for some public comment.
Well before the public comments start I'll just visit a little bit about it it says lots of phone calls lots of emails in the last week and and the 4H until three years ago when I become a commissioner and got to really spend some time on the fair board have enjoyed it immensely finding out of what the fair actually does do but besides the fair the fair is a very important thing to all and I believe that the 4H in the whole county in the whole area is strong and I I feel that everything has cycles I mean life in general we have cycles we have children they go off get married have children they decide to move back and they want to get their kids back into 4H so you have this low of people that's interested in 4H then you have people that are back into it I mean it cycles everybody talks about well it's hot today but it's not tomorrow it's gone here and it's gone there I would hate to see ag hall destroyed being a tall person though ag hall isn't conducive to everyone though I mean when you're walking around in the top area it's dangerous it's not a it's not a really nice place just to walk around because it's it's not conducive so that part of me always goes well we have the land yes let's just go build new if we're going to spend X amount of millions of dollars somewhere why not start somewhere today and look at the future generations having a nicer place to keep things going all said it's hard for me to believe that the city working with everything involved that the city just can't sit back and say here the seven acres and land is here you guys fit it but are just deed it over to the county and say here this is yours now you guys take care of it how we we want it to look like this do your best agriculture is agriculture that's what this is used for we need to continue that route we we're not a buy I mean we're not a Tony's Pizza Event Center why why make it look like one I mean it's we can we can do things to beautify the buildings without tearing the skin off and putting new skin on you can paint it it's good for years and years and years there's there's a whole lot of things that we could do to help the equine show coming in that's going to benefit the city a whole lot more than it's going to benefit the county so the sooner the quicker all of that could be modified to accommodate them I feel is going to be bringing in bigger shows more shows and benefit the whole community and the surrounding area I was just at a convention down in Kansas I mean Wichita and there was counties there just thanking us that that this equine equa Fest is coming to Salina they've already booked their motel rooms and everything else for this show and and they're thinking and this is Medicine Lodge out in Liberal it's like these people are thanking us for bringing it to Salina because it's in the middle they don't have to travel 22 hours to get somewhere but anyway that's my story and I just hope that we can get this resolved and move on down the road with a long-term lease or forever lease to help this from ever happening again.
Well you've obviously heard comments from the Commissioners like I said each one is their their individual thoughts and with that I guess we'll let the frenzy begin if someone has who wishes to be first I I I'll say one more thing I too received a lot of emails and phone calls and most of them weren't very nice you know and I I get it so any rate it's it'll be fun to move forward in one direction or another and I hope we can resolve it so public comment and and by the way state your name and address when you come to the podium and you will be limited to five minutes.
Joan Ratliff Salina thank you gentlemen I was at the city commission meeting yesterday and I thought that Melissa Hodges city commissioner's comment about having a joint meeting was a good idea and I personally would like to also agree with her that an evening meeting might be good and additionally I'd like to see it you know negotiations be in public it seems odd to me that we have two governing bodies that go into executive session to discuss negotiations with one another when it's the public's business and you know as as sensitive as it might be so I would just like to see all opportunities afforded to the public to observe and to be involved and I thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
My name is Justine Stateen representing Kansas Horse Council and Equafest of Kansas address is 8831 Quail Lane Suite 201 Manhattan Kansas we are visitors to Salina bringing our three-day equine expo event to Salina March 6 7 and 8 2020 we're very excited about that we expect an average of at least 10,000 probably more and we typically have about 2,000 other participants between vendors exhibitors volunteers and staff who come from out of town contributing positively to the economy of Salina I emailed you previously what our economic impact was in Topeka so that you have that idea of just how big this event is I'm addressing you today both professionally and as a 4H family participant of the Saline County Expo Center I understand that negotiations with the city are at an impasse as we've heard and that you may be considering no further negotiations which is a sad thought I understand that the county on a normal year does have excessive expenses somewhere around 350,000 and income of only 85,000 on average as you said and then to make aesthetic improvements which do not necessarily impact the function and flow of the facilities in consideration with the fact that you are looking at potential other investments that would appeal to livestock exhibitors and could effectively increase your rental income so there's a lot to be considered and I do recognize that I am hopeful that you do consider further negotiations and and not laying down that letter as had been proposed possibly because there's I think a lot of opportunity for further conversation I recognize there are a lot of details to navigate and I hope that you continue to seek an arrangement that would be win-win for both city and county and all the constituents and with that inviting more as we've heard a request for more public input and ideas that might be able to facilitate some collaborative investments or efforts that would help offset some of those expenses I know that there's a lot of organizations that would would be interested in in helping out in some way whether it's fundraising efforts the fair board I think would have a vested interest potentially the 4H would have a vested interest I mean I think I think there's opportunity there and and also looking at the historic relevance of Ag Hall Arena having been built with war bonds in 1922 it seems to me there might potentially be some opportunity for making that historic landmark and obtaining potentially some preservation funds for its restoration and potentially that might be able to help with some of the funding efforts also I know that there's a public Facebook forum and an advocacy group called the Citizens for Saline County Expo Center and perhaps they could be motivated into some kind of a fundraising endeavor that might help so you know I I know that's a huge burden for the county but when you look at what that facility does not just from an economic perspective but what it contributes for the citizens we heard from the the senior center that it's it's a location where they can utilize as an alternative while they're under construction I've also heard that there that's a location there's a generous citizen that does kind of a he's Santa Claus for a lot of Salina folks that maybe are low income and so he utilizes some of the facilities to to create that North Pole Station if you will so there's a lot of wonderful uses of having a community building that's affordable accessible and it also does bring in outsiders to the community that are an economic impact even though you don't directly see that income there's a definite appreciation for a facility like the Saline County Expo Center the location also of the expo center in its proximity to Tony's Pizza Event Center is necessary for Equafest to operate because we utilize both campuses it's also necessary for the continuation of many equine shows and the Junior Dairy Show and the Goat Show as well as 4H and FFA events plus the Tri Rivers Fair as we mentioned Kansas cannot afford to lose another equine and livestock venue as these are becoming lesser available I just also want to emphasize that there is an ag savvy staff there at the Saline County Expo Center who handle these events flawlessly and a skill that is only honed by experience that would be ashamed to lose them so if we consider just walking away and handing the keys over to the city will they have the same access to personnel that know the needs of an event center like that so just those are things to certainly keep in mind and I appreciate your time and opportunity to speak thank you.
Thank you I I normally try to stay away from commenting on the comments but I'd be remiss if I if I didn't say thank you to you Justine and and your council and the Equafest for coming to Salina it yet to be determined I mean what the outcome will be but and I think the starting date is what March the 6th of 2020 and from all forecasts I mean that's going to be a big deal for Salina and Saline County so we thank you and your group for for coming to in advance for coming to Salina and Saline County thank you anyone else?
My name is Stacy Lundquist I reside at 10965 West State Street in Brookville I'm a longtime Saline County resident I'm also a horseman and I'm also a national director for the American Paint Horse Association coming up here and speaking to all of you today I kind of feel like I'm preaching to the choir I know that I've been along on this ride for a few years now and been speaking with several of you over those few years I had some prepared comments today but I read most of them yesterday at the city meeting and today I think I'm just going to say that I want to thank you for your work on the upgrades it's something that as the horse community we have been focusing on for quite some time we want to host shows in Salina but when we go back to our exhibitors and say we're going to host our June show in Salina they come back to us and say but they don't have a covered warm-up pen they don't have the stalling that we need they don't have those upgrades that we want that we see in places like Hutchinson or we see in places like Lincoln Nebraska or Oklahoma City so I want to thank you for your willingness to work with the city and making those upgrades for us that we've been requesting I'm going to tell you that when the Kansas Coliseum started down this road and they started down the road of closure and talking about closing that facility in the horse community we all went well that's going to stink but we can move events to Hutchinson we can move events to Topeka I think it was after the facility had already closed that we went wow that was a huge loss to our state and we didn't realize the long-term consequences that would have and since then we keep seeing these shows move out of state to other facilities like Oklahoma City like Tulsa like Lincoln we don't want to see that to continue to happen we want to host shows in our own state it's been a blow to our pride to watch those shows leave I'm just going to urge the county and the city get back together and start renegotiating this lease or start renegotiating what we're going to do with the expo I know that there's a lot of groups that are willing to help with fundraiser we just need a direction to start or we need a little bit of guidance from you guys on what we need to do as citizens I don't think anybody's opposed to being active in that I think we're all just a little lost on how to begin that so thank you for your time and I hope to keep working with you in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Stacy.
Good morning gentlemen.
Good morning.
My name is Yvonne McCarthy I am the manager of the Salina Charity Horse Show I am also president of the American Saddlebred Association of Kansas we are one event in the grand spectrum that comes to the expo center but we have a long history we've been having the show there since 1941 I really don't have a whole lot to add from what I said yesterday which I know some of you heard and which Stacy mentioned and I really want to reinforce what she said I also want to point out that because of our show Salina and Saline County has national exposure we publish in national magazines we draw people from the five-state area to our show just the one event I just want to express my thanks for your work in this sort of Herculean task and let you know that our association is more than happy to help you out we can contact the city whatever you think might be good for a single association with a single event going on at the expo center our biggest concern is like Stacy said we don't have any place else to go the closest place we could go for oh I forgot to give my address.
Your fault.
Sorry.
We'll go back.
I'm from Wichita. The places closest place we could go is Kansas City and I don't feel like giving Kansas money to Kansas City I would rather fundraise here I would rather benefit the community here and I think most of the events that occur at the expo center whether they come from out of town or local I mean the focus is supporting Salina in fact if next year's show happens we're going to be supporting the St. Francis Boys Ranch again which we haven't done for a long time but it's it's a viable thing now so we want to support the Salina community and we make an effort to come up here from Wichita and fundraise here we fundraise in Wichita for this show I just want to pretty much offer you our support our national organization is just now focusing on mid-level shows which is what we are so there will be some support coming from our national organization and just want to pretty much thank you for your tolerance we will take guidance from you as as to approaching the city I was at the city meeting yesterday and I have a much better understanding of what's going on now but just want to offer you our support and say thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much.
Lonay Meyer from Salina just real quick I want to support what Joan Ratliff was asking for in terms of a community opportunity evening meeting to listen to what I would like to see a conversation between both county and and city commissioners I think it's common sense that if we're spending city or county tax money then citizens ought to have the opportunity to listen and ask questions and be a part of that decision thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Abner Purney 101 Overhill Mr. Vidriken's District former city commissioner I've watched city and county activities for the whole time I've lived in this city which is now approaching 38 years I think yeah it's an interesting problem I know there've been numerous studies of the expo center the bi-center together a bunch of plans the bicentennial center the city decided to go ahead and 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 spend 13 million dollars a few years ago well 10 years ago I think is when the decision made personally I had real mixed emotions then I thought maybe that was a bad investment I wanted to see that the place changed to a shopping center but then shopping centers and and hotel but that that's beside the point I guess. But that's beside the point, I guess. I am kind of surprised that there is as much positive support by organizations that are having activities there and want to continue to have activities there. I had somehow been under the impression that these are dying institutions, and that being in the middle of a town with only seven acres was a big negative. And today, it doesn't sound like that. I know that there've been a lot of, in some of the plans thrown out, one was this thing to move the entire Expo Center to the site out on Ohio and between Schilling and Waterwell. I think that's a horrible location, a really bad idea, and a total waste of taxpayers' money. And speaking of taxpayers, one of the things that always seems to be forgotten is that 80% of the money, 80% of the people in Saline County are in Salina. The citizens of Salina pay to support the county much more than the few thousand people that live in the rural part of the county. So, we always have this kind of weird imbalance, and I think, I agree with Laney and Joan that it's an embarrassment almost to those of us that are paying the taxes for both these government organizations, that we don't see you talking to each other. I really agree with them, that we really need to have a public, open forum with both commissions present to seriously discuss, "Where do you want to go? Is there a future for this sort of activities? Is it big enough to go someplace else and spend?" You know, we're talking about how expensive it is to spend $5 or $6 million at the present location, but we know you build one lousy metal building in Salina for sports activities and costs $13 million. So, if you go to some other site, it's going to cost a whole lot more than $5.7 million. It's going to cost $20 million just to scratch the surface. And we don't have, I don't think we have a good site. I did want to suggest also, when you're discussing out-of-the-box possibilities, Chairman, former Chairman Shadwick, Commissioner Shadwick, I've got, my out-of-the-box thing that's worth discussing, maybe, is since we have a joint Ottawa County, Saline County Extension Service with their own tax levy, and we have fairgrounds in both those counties, is there ever been any discussion of putting those two entities together? That brings in a third governing body, another county commission, but it does, in a way, if this is a declining industry, a niche market, it does kind of say we'd have more forces together in central Kansas if Ottawa County and Saline County worked together on the Expo Center, or an Expo Center, or a venue for agricultural-based events. And to me, they have, if the two counties wanted to go and spend the $20 million or so, they have a great site sitting there vacant, and that's the vacant racetrack at the corner of I-80, I-135, US-81, and Kansas 106, right outside of Minneapolis. So, if you're talking about moving, I think that's a much better place to move than into southeast Salina. At any rate, I think there needs to be a whole lot more discussion, and there needs to be direct, transparent discussion where you get lots of city and interested organization inputs. One of the things that's been a great mystery to me is the Fair Board. You never, I don't recall, it's very, very rare that you see any really public statements from the Fair Boards about how they're doing financially. I've tried to go to one of their meetings, and I was just lost. I'm in the wrong mindset, being a city boy from Topeka and Salina, I guess. But I would like to see more public discussion of the actual users, by the actual users of the present Expo Center, and what their future realistic goals might be.
Excuse me a moment. Mr. Chair, if I may, we aren't talking about a new location. We're talking about our present location now, seven acres with a long-term lease. There have been many, many joint meetings between the city and the county. And this has been ongoing for a three-year process now, and you ever get 10 elected officials together and try to come up with consensus, or everybody on the same page? There's so many players involved in this, it's difficult. And thus, when it comes down to negotiations between the city and the county, that's the reason it's executive session, because it's negotiations, which is an exemption. We have had many public meetings, and we're still at an impasse. We haven't gained anything. We're at the same point we were three years ago, not really, because when we started out with this, we were asking for a 50-year lease, and now we're down to 40. That's where we're at. That's the only issue right here, is whether we're going to get a 40-year lease, or give it up a little over a year from now, and give it back to the rightful owner, the landlord, because we're just tenants right now. Do you understand that?
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. Okay, well, at any rate, I've taken more than my five minutes, but I would like to see one more time something done that would be economical, number one, and I'm one of the people that has very little faith that this is really an expanding interest, area of interest and industry and business. And it almost sounds like the fact that the big city one in Wichita has closed, that there's others closing, that the niche may be strong enough that it'd be worthwhile for us to preserve and protect our location and extend it. And that we need to get the city off, and the county, you gentlemen, also off the impasse, because it just doesn't make any sense to us taxpayers that are ultimately going to pay for it.
All right. Thank you. And I think you will hear from some more users before we're done.
Linda Lilly, 3229 East Waterwell Road. I wasn't going to speak today. That's real hard for me to keep my mouth shut, but, Mr. Purney, I am a long-term member of the Fair Board, so you're going to hear me speak today. Also, a lover of horses. The biggest thing I see is that if you've not come to the recent fair, we take great pride, there's several of us here today. We do make an impact on kids. If you've not been to the fair recently, we work our butts off to make it a good fair for the 4-H kids. And it's not the only event that happens over there. I'm a longtime horse lover. I get really emotional about this. I have a great passion for kids and horses, so it's probably going to make me cry. If you've not been a child that lost a father, that had a horse that saved your world, then you don't know what it means to have a life with a horse. I see these, the equine changing kids' worlds. I also have the privilege of working at Shiloh Ranch and see how horses change lives of kids that have had a horrible life. So, it's more than just the economic impact, you guys. I'm the vice president of an ag bank. I get the economic impact of the economy of Salina. Equifest has been an event I have gone to. Justine, how many years have you had it?
This is coming into the 23rd.
I've probably been to 20 of them. It is a huge event where a lot of good things happen. If you don't believe that a horse changes the child, trust me, I'm one of them. I was 13 years old, my father died, and I have been around horses all my life. I know what they do. It's more than just having a great ag hall. What a great, great building. I know it's not ADH compliant, I get that, but what a great center of town to keep it there. Seven acres is not enough for us, I get that, but we can make it work. That building can be changed. We can make it work for these kids. If you've not been to a fair and seen these young men and women take pride, and again, because I'm a horse lover, watch these kids take their horse from a mud, water-filled stall where they've housed their horse, ready to go in there and show, and they get soaking wet because of the rain, they get mud up to their ankles, but they take great pride in showing that horse at the fair. Our facility needs updated. Is $5.7 million? I don't know, you guys, but I'm telling you what, if there's a horse in a kid's life, it might keep him out of that fancy jail that we're building.
Thank you.
Norman Mantle, Salina. We need to settle who owns this property. At one time, the county owned this property. Now, the city owns it. If you could somehow convince, persuade, however persuasive you use, get ownership of that property back, then you can move forward, because they own the property. They're going to have the last say on it. That's been said before. So, if you can get the property back, if, there's a process, you can get it back, but it's going to be expensive to do it. It's been done before.
Thank you.
Try and get the property back.
Carl Garten, Central Kansas Extension Director, Chamber of Commerce Ag Committee, Saline County Fair Board, live at 116 Aspen Road. The only thing I did, I went back last night, and I watched the November 13th meeting. I think, from what I just, or digest from their comments that they made, you know, the city's concern is about over what, how are we going to keep this facility up? And as commissioners, I think you can agree that over the last 10 years, maintenance on the facility has been what has to be done to keep the buildings open. We haven't had any major projects to improve doors and things like that on any of those facilities over there, and the reason for that is the lease, you know? And I don't, and I've got the same problem you guys do with the lease part of this, so if we could come to some agreement that this thing is going to be a 40-year lease or what, with some checkpoints in there that, you know, yeah, we are keeping the maintenance up, we're doing projects on this facility, and those types of things, maybe everybody can come to agreement, okay? I guess the other concern I have is the fact that in this society today, what are we going to spend? How many millions of dollars for this damn jail? And why can't we take those horse barns that they guys want to get rid over there and move them over here by your jail, and make each one of those horse stalls a little jail room for those new inmates, okay? And save some money on that facility. I mean, I am sorry, but we spend a lot of money on jails and those types of things in our society nowadays, and where we don't spend the money that we need to on keeping people out of there, and keeping kids active, and those types of things with whatever projects going on. So, with that, I'll let you go. Thank you.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning, Eric.
Thank you. Eric Brown, President of the Saline Area Chamber of Commerce. Welcome, Phil. Glad to have you here. Like Carl said, he is the chair of our ag committee. He's been the chair for several years, so we do thank him. The concept that agriculture is going away in the state of Kansas and in Saline County is a fallacy, in my opinion. It may look different. It may feel different, but it's not something that's going to go away in the state of Kansas. This Expo Center conversation, you definitely got our attention with the draft letter, so I know that may be part of what that intention was, but it's definitely kicked up some new voices and some different opinions that maybe haven't been brought to the forefront. So, thank you for listening, and thank you for being on the commission and spending your time this way. There are a lot of economic impact that happens at the Expo Center. I know we've shared that number. Actually, last, on November 27th, 2018, was the last time we put together those numbers and sent them to the county. But just in the last year, there's been an estimated $1.8 million in economic impact that has either happened at the Expo Center, or at the TPEC, or jointly. And then there's a potential in the next year for another five different conventions to come to town and take up residency at TPEC and the Expo Center, or a combination. Mid-America Farm Show is 54 years old. We couldn't do it without the Expo Center, so that is something that is very near and dear to the chamber's heart as well. The other thing, point I'd like to make, is it sounds like some of the conversations that I've been having with city commissioners and county commissioners and business members, there's some ideas out there, you know, the concept of having to spend $5.7 million out of the gate, that could be something that could be ratcheted down potentially. I know this is a, like you said, you've been doing this, with this for decades, and the taxpayers have been seeing this going on for decades as well. So, we definitely hope that you all will get together again with the city and work through this process, and come to an amenable decision that can keep the Expo Center open that makes financial sense as well. So, that's just an easy request, right? The other thing I will tell you is losing the meet-and-sleep hotel venue in our community. We lost that, we lost that over the process of several years, and what happened is that that created a void, and that business went elsewhere. And I think that's also what their point is. That business will leave town. And with the Hilton Garden Inn coming in South Salina, that business is starting to come back, and it's taken five years, though. And the Visit Salina Division can tell you how many different shows and how many different associations are now coming back to town and looking at Salina that haven't been here in five-plus years. So, that would be the kind of opportunity cost that we could lose in this community from that, from the business perspective as well. So, thank you again. I appreciate you serving, and don't, wouldn't want to be in your shoes during this decision-making process, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I talk? One more quick thing?
Very quick.
Very quick. Laney from Salina. Okay, my response, reaction to the comments, a couple negative comments, what seemed negative to me about the whole jail building versus this.
Okay, we're not going to talk about the jail today, Laney. I'm sorry.
All I'm saying is, it's all important.
I agree.
Those people in jail are important, too. And yes, children can be helped, which can be part of that whole project, but I'm hoping everyone will pay attention to both.
Thank you.
Carol Ann Bachover, 1657 North Wyman Road, Brookville, Kansas. Just as a very brief preview, I was born and raised in this county. It is Saline County. I'm proud of that fact. I'm a 10-year veteran 4-H member here, an eight-and-a-half-year county extension agent, and I spent 46 years of my life as a veteran teacher. I came back to this community about 25 years ago, and I've been trying to keep in touch with what's going on. I think one of the most important things is to look at the bottom line. We need to be self-sufficient. $270,000 in the hole, plus the debt incurred from the changes to the Expo Center, I really have a hard time swallowing that as a taxpayer. I don't, if I lived in the city of Salina, I would probably even be more upset. The bottom line, as far as I'm concerned, how can we, the land owned by the city and the county commission and the county, providing this experience for all of these people? Yes, I understand what 4-H did and does to people, because I wouldn't be here today if it hadn't been for 4-H. We cannot be emotional about this. We have to look at the bottom line of what's it costing our county and our city. I think both boards have an opportunity to work towards figuring that out. It's dollars and cents. Where can we agree on something to make it work? And I do appreciate both commissions and the hours and the time that they've put in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Nurse? I'm Sylvia Rice, 867 Windsor Drive. I'm the Visit Salina Director for the Chamber of Commerce. I've been there just shy of 30 years or so. There are just... There are just a couple of points that I want to make. One, I think one of the things that it's important to think about is how is success measured? And how is impact measured? And I'm not necessarily talking about just economic impact, but quality of life impact as well. But we are often the group that's looked at when we talk about economic impact, so I want to clarify a couple of things that, that Eric already said. He talked about a 1.8 million dollar economic impact over a course of time at the Expo Center. What I want to make sure that everyone in the room understands is, that is a very specific number, measuring data that we have, good data that we have, on a very finite number of events. There are many other events that are happening over there that are not included in that number. And most certainly, as Visit Salina, we are looking very specifically at events that are generating visitation and overnight travelers coming in. So anything that's happening on a day-to-day, whether it's an auction, or a quinceañera, or anything like that, we, honestly, we don't look at at all. We do have many shows and so forth. In fact, Joanne McClure, who's our, our convention coordinator at, at the chamber, and works very specifically with these events, has been passing out her business card furiously with some new names that we have learned between yesterday's meeting and today's, that are related to events that we don't have good data on. And so we'll be able to measure those events as well, and add those to the numbers that we're generating. And while I understand certainly the concept of the bottom line, I think that what is important to remember is, when we're talking about that economic impact, I know it's a struggle as a, operationally, as an organization and as a facility. But despite what we like to think, facilities of this type generate dollars for other businesses, they don't necessarily generate numbers for themselves. So while we're trying to decide whether or not it's a success, we need to take a look at and speak to people who are selling food to the visitors, who are renting hotel rooms to the visitors, who are entertaining folks on their car lots, looking at new trucks and trailers. That is a measure of success. It's difficult for us to, to get our hands on and to get our heads wrapped around. So I join everybody else in saying, A, great work at what you've accomplished thus far, and encourage City Commission to, again, come back and talk some more. I, I don't think there are City Commissioners that don't want to do that, but to talk some more, to figure out how to get to where we need to get to in order to make sure that this is a success for everyone. I don't think anybody wants to see restaurants and hotels and other businesses lose business, because that means we're losing tax revenue from the tax base. We may be losing jobs. And so all of those things need to factor into that measure of success. We want to work closely with all of the groups. We're excited about the other events happening. And that facility also serves far beyond the ag. It's very much recognized as an ag facility, but we see it used often in tandem with Tony's Pizza Event Center for conventions that need additional space, and it's so convenient to have it right there. So while everybody gets excited periodically about new locations and so forth, from a selfish point of view, and working with conventioners, and, and that sort of thing, those meeting planners, it has become a, a real asset to, to those folks, to be able to move a luncheon across the parking lot, which means you're not resetting a huge facility when you're looking at hundreds or thousands of people coming in. So we're super excited about Equifest, we're excited about all of these events, but mostly we're excited about the opportunity of the community, and how we can become more and more involved with these folks one-on-one, to, to really make them a part of the measurements that we do, so. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission regarding the Celine County Expo Center?
Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. And on item number five, we have it down that we would approve, the motion would be to approve, to forward the expo letter to the city of Salina. It will be my recommendation to my fellow commissioners that we delay that action, and pursue perhaps a few of the, the comments that we've heard today that are, that are both pro and, and con on the situation, and try to perhaps engage the city in some more extended conversations. I've heard some wonderful ideas on raising money, and like, some of you said, send your checks, if you, if you're wanting to help that much, we'll take your checks, and we'll, we'll let you put your name on the front of that building for, for about a million bucks if you want to do that, and it would, it would probably solve all of our problems. So are there any other comments from my commissioners, or do they support my position in delaying the action on sending the letter?
I'm, I'm happy to delay it also, and, and am willing to engage the City Commission again. I think it's a fallacy, though, that we have not been doing that, and we have been doing that in public. And so when you start talking about price and, and lease terms, they need to be, happen behind closed doors. But other than that, and Commissioner Hay is here, and you've been at those, you know, meetings, and we had our first meeting four years ago. I mean, where some of us weren't even here. So we have had public meetings, and, but at the same time, I'm willing to do it again, so.
I, I agree that I, I would like to postpone any action and, and have our administrator reach out to see if he couldn't set up a, a joint meeting. We, one more time can discuss this, and maybe come to a, a common ground. I, I also want to appreciate the, let you know, I appreciate the professional attitude that was brought out by the public here today, and, and I respect your opinions.
Mr. Garten made an interesting comment. Sorry to pick on you, Carl, but you deserve it. You said there hasn't been any substantial monies invested in the Expo Center. You're correct. The last monies invested was 25 years ago. I was even a part of that, and it was for $100,000 for air conditioning for the 4-H building, lowering the ceilings. That took an act of Congress and three years to get that accomplished. And now, years later, here I'm sitting again, trying to get something accomplished. I've got five, four fellow county commissioners willing to invest some monies in the facility, starting number one, that was brought up as a need 30-plus years ago, a warm-up arena. We've got monies allocated to get that accomplished. Right now, we could put, we could bid it. But guess what? We don't own the land. That's what we're after. At least a 40-year lease, or a quick claim deed, deeding it over, so the county can invest money in that facility. We can't do it without a long-term lease. So I don't mind tabling this for another week, or more discussions. Frankly, I'm talked out. I've said all I possibly could at joint meetings, and everybody has communicated with me. I've said my piece, so I'm going to stick firm and request a 40-year lease, or a quick claim deed, or I'm saying, we're done. That's where I'm at, Mr. Chairman, just for the record.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I want to thank you all for showing up today. It's been a interesting situation again, and, again, I, I look at it, and I, I'm with them. Let's, let's, if we can get something done, but my thing is, there is going back to where you have 10 people in a room, and you try and get something accomplished, you, you start bringing up questions again, and blah, 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 blah. I think that it goes back to, we have administrators to take care of it, you go back to the lawyers, and you go, okay, here's what we want, where do we need to be? Because 10 commissioners sitting down at a table, we've been there many times, and we bring up a few ideas. Well, those ideas have been thrown here and thrown there, and it, and it goes back to, this lawyer says this, and this lawyer, we get at this, and we goes back to them, back and forth. And I, I think it's at their hands now. It's, it's not like in, in us, commissioners are going to sit down and never come up with anything, because we're going to always have this different opinion about what needs to be done. It's like, okay, can we, how do we get there? You know, how do we get there? And that's, that's, that's our deal. And hopefully that we can talk further and get down the road. The sooner the better, because we gotta, we gotta get something done, because I, I look at it as, this Equifest is, is going to be a big thing, and I'd love to see it continue here in Salina, and for Celine County, and for the whole general state, and the whole area, and other shows. And I, I think the sooner we can get some of this covered arena done, and move on down the road, the better it is for everybody, for the general public and the taxed dollar city and county. Thank you.
I wish to thank everyone for coming today and expressing your views, and as Jim said, in a, in a very professional manner. Perhaps something can be met in the middle, I'm not sure of that yet, but I can tell you what, I'll make, I personally will make the effort, and I'm confident that my other four commissioners will, too, and, and we'll make an effort to somewhere, find some common ground to, to make this work for the community, from all aspects of it. So again, thank you for attending. I want to announce that Friday, we will host an open house for Mr. Philip Smith Haynes, and welcome him to our community, and the public is invited. Hopefully you can come and say hello to him, and I think he'd like that. So at this point in time, if there being no other business, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
So moved to the second, then we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post the same sign. We're adjourned. Thank you.